Everybody, it's Thursday evening, the February 21st, and we are having a joint meeting of the St. Peter School Board and the City Council. This is an informational meeting tonight. No action items on the agenda, but just an opportunity for us to talk about some subjects that are mutually important to both of us. And we've got an hour scheduled for this, but it doesn't need to take an hour if it doesn't need an hour, so we'll just move right along with that. And let's call this meeting to order. And we take a moment to introduce the people around the table. Do you want to start on your end?
Steve Graham, St. Peters, what he calls.
Paul Peterson, Superintendent, St. Peter Public Schools.
Todd Crafty, City Administrator in St. Peter.
Mark Carl's with the School Board.
Chuck Zaman, Mayor.
Drew Hickson, School Board.
Mickey Hager, School Board.
Jerry Piper, City Council.
Ed Johnson, City Council.
Tim Wilkins, School Board.
Very good. Over to you guys.
Let me jump on the first one if I can. Mr. Chair, first of all, we had on our list demographics, and when the superintendent and I originally put this agenda together, we had not heard back from the state demographer yet. And so we were going to present some additional information, but in the meantime, we heard back from Susan Bower, who's the state demographer. And so she is scheduled to come and visit with all of you on May 2nd. So we don't have no location exactly set yet, but we really have two goals for your discussion tonight. Well, maybe it's three. First of all, to alert you to that meeting on May 2nd. Second of all, to really have at least some level of discussion. Do you have specific questions that you think might be appropriate for us to pass along to the state demographer, so that when she comes, she can say, "Well, you asked me about this. Here's some great information on that topic." The third item then would be, are there other groups within the community that you'd like to make sure that we invite to that meeting? We envision it being, and she's planning to do a presentation, and I don't know if any of you have heard her speak, but she does just an excellent job. And so she'll come very prepared, and she'll talk for 10 minutes to an hour if you want. And part of Paul's, my goal in this was to really identify that we had a lot of changes going on within our communities. She's seen Russell and Paul, or the demographics, whether it's cultural, or age, or whatever it might be, and how does that impact the kinds of services that we provide for our community? And so that's really what we're having her come up with. Really happy to get her. We sent a number of emails to try and get her to come, so again, May 2nd is that timeline. So first, are there specific questions or things that you want to make sure that we seed her with, so as she comes, she can identify at least some representation specifically to what you're interested in hearing? So that's the question for all of you. And if you don't have any, Paul and I got a bunch that we'll just ship off to her, but that's why we're here and talking about it tonight.
Well, I guess what I'd like to, and I'm sure she'll probably provide this, hopefully she will, is the change over a time period, whether it's the census to census, or whatever that is. I guess that's a question I get asked quite often. And like I say, hopefully, hopefully she'll be able to have that readily available.
And Mayor Zaman, one of the things that I know that she will be promoting is complete count. And as you know, the council has set aside opportunity for there to be a committee established. And so that probably won't happen for a few months here yet, but the discussion had been that maybe there's a person or two from the school board that would be interested in serving on that. And that's really going to be an effort to make sure that we're counting everyone within the community, putting out the word about filling out the census and participating in that effort. Any other big questions you want to make sure that we look at and move forward? Certainly culture in relation to community over the long term, whether it's three years, five years, 10 years, immigrant populations, what she might see, that's certainly one of the ones that Paul and I had on our list, if you think that's an appropriate question.
Are there any socioeconomic questions related to demography, or is that a different arena?
No, that is certainly something that they gather data on, and we can certainly ask about that, how that might be changing. Yeah. Any others that you might have or can think of? And this isn't the only time you can mention. If you have thoughts after this, certainly let Paul or I know. Our intent would be, or how she indicated to us, is that she'd love to hear something from us before the 1st of April, so that she can gather some of that data for a May 2nd visit. So there's a little bit of time, but.
We might see a sample of her work, and then by looking at that, might inspire some questions or some other areas.
Can definitely pull together some things that she shared in the past. She has, if you haven't heard her, that there's no way we're going to get through that night and for people to think, "Oh, that was just okay." I mean, it's very, very interesting and hits the marks everywhere. But yes, she's got updated things that she's done in the region just in the last six months. We can shoot those to everybody, just to see what the flavor typically is, and there might be some spinoffs of that that we could push her on.
Question I have, and maybe you mentioned this, Todd, referring to her as she, does she have a name?
Yeah, Susan Bower.
Susan Bower?
Yep. Or maybe send a bio out to you, too. All right, if there aren't any more of those, let me hit the next one. Are there other groups that you want to make sure get invited? And that's one of the reasons we don't have a place exactly determined. We had indicated to her that it could be anywhere up to 100 folks attend, so we wanted to provide some room, and so it depends on how many. And I don't know who it might be, but if there are other specific groups that you want to see us reach out to and say, "Come to this. It's going to be very interesting." Community Commissioners?
I would think they could be involved.
Okay.
Especially the two locals.
We could send an invite to the Chamber Executive Board. I mean, that's 10 to 12 people. I suppose we could send the whole chamber, that's a few hundred people, hundreds and hundreds of people, if you take all the employees, but.
Make sure we include Chris Lobe.
Oh, that's a great idea.
And I would imagine that probably should reach out to somebody else besides us.
I know several of the Lions Club members would be interested in a presentation like that.
Sure.
Well, if we're inviting the Lions.
Don't.
Sorry, it's awful.
Paul, you better reserve the auditorium of the.
Yeah, there you go.
How about the administration at the hospital?
Oh, that's a great idea. Any other groups that you work closely with that you might want to hear that, or that you know are really interfaced with what you do and how services are provided? That's a good list.
Certainly send something out to the leadership team at MSBA. They may be interested in not only South Central data, but if she goes a little more statewide.
Well, there again, if you think of someone else, let us know in the not-too-distant future, because space could be an issue, and we want to make sure that we accommodate appropriately at our facilities, so. All right. Anything else related to demographics? That was kind of our plan for tonight. All right. If you don't mind, we'll go on to the next one. Community Spirit Park. Let me just kick that one off, and Paul and I will tag team on this. So within the board packet for the school board, you received a draft, the agreement. Council members have seen that in the past and passed out a copy to them tonight. And so this agreement is what I would call substantially similar to the agreement that you entered last year. Dates have been changed, some of the tables have been changed to reflect some of the updated information, numbers, work product that's gone at Community Spirit Park. Part of our goal was to make sure that Pete was available and Mark was available if there were very specific questions about things that were going on. The intent of this agreement is to go one more year. We had talked previously at one point about having a multi-year agreement. As we met as a team internally, the discussion really related to, well, we're still experimenting and still working on getting all this stuff figured out. So having one year forces us to make sure we're in communication again, and so that's really what Paul and I are bringing forward to you. I don't know, Paul, is there anything?
Yeah, no, I think that's great. I think if Pete and Mark can come up and just talk through some of the more specific things, I think at the more administrative level, what Todd and I have tried to do is stay true to the agreement, stay true to the partnership. And as we all know, what's been going on out on Broadway for several years now has really been a unique partnership. Todd and I have said many, many times over several years, you know, there are reasons why cities and schools sometimes just stick to their own business, because it can just be challenging. But what has happened out there is just a remarkable level of cooperation. So not only was it built, but now it's been managed for a year plus and also now maintained. And as Todd said, the first year of the agreement was, "Well, let's give this a shot and just see how it goes." I would get regular updates from Mark and Tim Regner. Todd was getting regular updates from his staff. And later on tonight, the school board is going to be looking at approving a second year of that agreement. So I think getting a little perspective as to the work, how we did, and what we're looking at moving forward is something that we want to talk about together tonight.
Yeah.
Well, in regard to the maintenance agreement, the city took on the maintenance, the role of taking care of the maintenance of the fields, mowing, trimming, fertilizing, everything that, painting of those fields, something the school district needed to have taken care of, and we're looking for resources and somebody to do that. And connected with the city, as you mentioned, last year, we're looking to do it again. It went very well. The quality of the work and the attention to detail by the gentleman that worked up there was really well done, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah.
So Pete, could you guys identify yourselves since we are filming?
Sorry, Mark Bachman, St. Peter School District Facilities.
Pete Moulton, Public Works Director. So as Mark had touched, you know, it was a unique situation, because our normal process is ramp up in the spring, serve our associations, and do our own thing, and then by August, we're getting ready to wind down. Kids are going to school, not our problem anymore. And it's kind of the opposite now, is now we ramp up in the spring, and then we ramp up in the summer, and we look at fall and say, "Now what do we got to have done before the next spring?" And so I think it's unique on how things are going there. It's great as far as the relationship has gone. A lot of communication is required, there's a lot of needs, and it's coming from all different directions. I think what's new for the school district is working with the associations that they haven't experienced from the building point of view, and they've done a great job of that. I know with Mark and Jordan, it's been involved quite a bit in coordinating, not only through Parks Board, but also meeting with associations and trying to see where loops and things can improve our community from a campus point of view. We've gone through a few bumps out there. We hope every year that we experience this, that it'll get a little better, and that we can make it efficient and provide for the community in a manner they see fit.
We have lots and lots of people that want to use those facilities, lots of groups that want to use them, and so it's not just the maintenance part of it, but it's the scheduling part of it, and trying to get the maintenance in between ballgames and rain and snow and other things that go on, which has been, it's a big project.
Yeah, I was going to share exactly what you said, the scheduling part. You know, once school year would get done before the new high school was built, it was really Jane in the rec department that took over all the scheduling for all the associations. So in the wintertime, we have worked with the associations using the gyms, but not so much outside. And that was definitely a new feature, having people use those fields to your own.
How about questions you guys may have?
I'd like to hear from both of you individually or group. What is the biggest thing you think we need to work on and improve in this relationship or this, the way this is set up?
I think just a continual communication of what the needs are. We both run quite a few other things besides that campus, and so we really kind of hand that off to different hands within our organization, and making sure that the needs are met, I think is one of the biggest things.
Yeah, it's definitely a challenge. One of the pieces that we found worked as it went on is I would meet every two weeks with Tim Mayo and just talk about what's going on. He would ask, "What do you need? What do you see?" That really helped us stay on the same page, because if you go too long, you can drift different directions, and might be wondering what's happening. So keeping that communication going, it really helped out as we did that.
Like you're an underlying positive theme, so I'm hoping that's definitely true.
And that campus has evolved, you know? When we first started out there, we talked about practice facilities. And by the time the summer was done and the fall sports were done, you know, they were playing varsity soccer games out there, and just meeting that expectation, because it takes a lot of work, it doesn't happen overnight, and you've got to be five to six weeks in front of that decision. And hopefully, we've met those expectations, and that constant feedback is one of the things we've got to keep doing.
Some of the big challenges going forward are amenities moving forward. You know, do we need benches? Do we need additional bleachers? Do we need this? Do we need that? Do we need the other thing? As the school board knows, and as I know the city council knows, that facility will be evolving. It's not 100% there yet, there are other things that need to go along. And so the challenge for our community is to help determine, how do we put those things together? What are the priorities? How do we put dollars to that to make some of those things go? And what do people want to see? How do we match up, again, those expectations or those priorities or the resources to make it go? So that's going to be evolving, and we won't always hit it right. We just, we'll try, but we won't always hit it right. But we've got to keep going, and it's a substantial opportunity for folks within our community, not just organized athletics, not just organized programs. There's lots of frisbee throwing going on out there. There's lots of bikes and walkers and strollers moving on the trails there. All of those things are going on, and it's, if you haven't been out there this last summer, make sure you're out there for a couple hours, a couple times of the summer. It's a hopping place, it really is.
Only 26 days till spring.
Thanks.
Thanks, punks at the door. I'm taking snow with her.
So from Paul's, my standpoint, the goal is that both boards will go and take action on an agreement for the upcoming year. And so that's what we're really hoping that can happen over the next week or so, for both the board and the city council.
The part of enhancements?
Well, and maybe I, we kind of use enhancements and amenities interchangeably, so that is that discussion. So that's something that the Parks Board has really talked about. I know that the school board and committee has talked about that a little bit, so I can't speak really towards that.
Yeah, I guess my question is, are we getting together at some point and talking about it? Are we just separately?
Yeah, it's, you know, and I'll just chime in on that, and Mark and Pete can talk way more specifics, and that might be really interesting for people to hear about. But something from the very beginning that we kind of committed to is developing the park together. So we don't get into the sort of situation where, you know, we all understand that we jointly own this beautiful campus, but at the same time, there are lines out there as to technically what is school district property and what's city property. The commitment from the very beginning was not getting into a situation where there's a component of that park that looks drastically different and say, "Oh, well, this is where we want to play. This is where we can obviously see the resources have been put." But to see it over time evolve together, and there will be certain things that happen at different times, it's not as if it'll all go up at once, but to keep a kind of a running tally as to how it's being developed.
Yeah, I think, the first thing that came to mind is we don't want Packer garbage cans here and Viking garbage cans there. That's not going to be okay. So we're going to continue to communicate and make sure that park looks like 130-acre park that we're both proud of. I think, I don't want to speak for Pete, but with the scoreboards going up last fall, you know, to have the city logo up there and the school logo up there really tells what that park's about, so that's working together.
As far as the commitment's concerned, you know, we met with you guys last year, and you guys set a track for us, and we've accomplished most of that. We'll finalize a few of those corrections here this spring going forward, and then we've got a path set for 2019. It's more of a reduced path this year, but that's kind of expected with the condition that we're in for both the school and for the city. But you'll see a little bit of color this year, a little more of the walking nature improvements as far as benches and flowers, like Todd and Paul have mentioned, and so you'll see a little different, more of a oriented towards the people walking through there.
You know, for the most part, this isn't a school or a city facility. It's a community facility, and all the taxpayers are helping pay for that. So however we can cooperate and be efficient is really good for everyone, and so that's our overall goal.
Well, our facilities committee reviewed this this week, and it's making a recommendation to the board tonight to act on it, so.
And this will be coming up at an upcoming council meeting then as well.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is school resource officer. So I know that, I think, Principal Englinger and Chief Peters are here to kind of provide a little bit of discussion based on what the agenda says, a little bit of the history of the position, and talk about some of the responsibilities that we have currently, maybe a little bit looking forward.
Yep, so as they get situated, just to kind of frame this up from the school district's perspective, you know, safe welcoming, secure facilities, you know, have been a long part of our strategic plan. This year in particular, the 1819 school year, a more specific focus on safety and security, looking at all elements, whether that is infrastructure, whether it's mental health, whether it's cyber security. And so the district has been going through, how we do lockdown drills and the Alice training and enhanced lockdowns. And also a part of that comprehensive study has been looking at our relationship with the city in regards to the school resource officer partnership. We meet with chief and his department on a regular basis as an administrative team, and it's through those discussions that really kind of have led us to tonight, where, you know, getting some information from the school perspective, from a net, but then also from the chief about some of the history, about how did we ever get to the point where officers were not just providing services to school districts, but in the schools on a regular basis? So with that intro.
That's pretty much it. And good night, everyone. Well, how we got here and where we started, it's been a while. Back in January of 1999, Gil Carlson came to me at that time and said, "There were a couple of things that had happened around the country," and his concern was that we needed to have a school resource office. And the question was, "Why don't we?" And lots of districts at that time had started these kind of programs. So I don't know, how I got assigned to be a historian, I guess I'm getting old. And I don't know how many of you knew Gil, but Gil just kind of like, "Okay, you know, this is what we're going to do." And so at that time, we met in January of 99. At that time, the school district was levying about $17,000 a year for safety. And basically, what they were doing is giving that money at that time to the city for the resources they were getting from the city. But there really wasn't anything concrete laid out, there wasn't an organization, there wasn't really the people to do it. The police just responded as necessary. And what we tried to do is look at what this position could do, not, you know, now it's more, I think, safety-oriented. At the time, it was, "How can we reduce juvenile delinquency?" And shouldn't the place to start be in the schools? And my thinking was, it still really is, is once kids get past probably 16 or 17, maybe we lost them if we haven't kind of got a grasp with their juvenile delinquency up to that point. And so we wanted to have a proactive approach to deal with this. So to do that, we thought, "Well, a police officer is one of the best deterrents to crime, and they also can teach kids about everything from drugs to what the role of police and the criminal justice system as a whole is." And it really took off from there. I think at the time we started this, the district had five social workers and a full-time psychologist at the time. And I don't know what that number is today. I don't have any idea. So Gil went to the board, I went to the city council, and, I mean, everyone was unanimously on board with this. I think Gil figured out the money part. I don't know if Todd figured that out or got rolled over on it. I'm trying to remember the history of that.
There couldn't have been any of those things.
It could have been any of those. But by June, we were up and running. We had a full-time officer working for the school district in the schools at that time. And to get it running, Dr. Olson and I sat down, figured out, you know, what are the job responsibilities for this person going to be? Because the police officers for the city of St. Peter, they have a labor agreement. It's not a position, it is an assignment. So they get paid the same as any other police officer. So Dr. Olson and I, we figured out the goals, objectives, and responsibilities, and this is kind of what we've done for 20 years. It really has been amazing. And you think, with all of you sitting in the same room, I think it just points out that, and I say this a lot, especially with the school district, is you can't have a partnership without the sharing of risks, accountability, responsibility, and sharing in the benefits. And we've done that. I think we've really done that, and that's why this has worked. Now, to get kind of to today, as Dr. Peterson took away some of my history here, but what we do now is meet with, certainly, we meet, and we meet with your leadership team, but not just about necessarily the school resource position. Our detectives, myself, and we deal with child protection issues and really what's happening in schools and what we can do to increase security and safety, because now that really is one of the biggest concerns we have. I can go on. Now, I think where we're at today, 20 years later, is dealing with everything from not simply, what a school resource officer, police officers really are dealing with today isn't simply juvenile delinquency anymore. You know, we're training officers in mental health crisis, de-escalation, you know, really mental illness issues, and also implicit bias training, and all these things that also relate to kids and families that go to our schools. So the role has really grown, it hasn't gotten smaller. And then we built a new school. In the last 20 years, we have more students, the district's grown, and what I'm doing is, is I have now one school resource officer that can't do everything he needs to do. And so that's really why we're here, is to try to lay out why we would like to add an additional person to help cover the four schools. And to answer questions people have also. Did I cover any?
You did a great job. Thank you. I'm Annette Englinger, and I'm here representing the school district. I'm the high school principal. And so I can share with you over the last years that I've been in both an assistant principal position and the principal. I work quite closely with Officer Tom Wensel, who's currently our liaison officer. Chief Peters alluded to the. Chief Peters alluded to the fact that the position has changed in recent years. As a, as a school, we would hope that all of Tom's time was spent on, um, on prevention, getting to know kids, uh, you know, being a, being a presence in the hallway. And, um, and, and he's, he still does have time to do some of that. He's a member of our, of our student assistance team, uh, which is, which is a group of social workers, guidance counselors, dean of students, our school nurse, um, and Officer Tom. Uh, and, and that's a group that, uh, that know what's, really know what's going on with our kids. Um, and, and if, if the school's social worker, for example, doesn't know what's going on at home, sometimes Officer Tom is the person who has that connection with it back to the community. And we can all, we can all do what we can to help kids and their families. Safety and security, uh, concerns have increased in recent years with, uh, with what's going on nationwide. Uh, and so, so to that end of, of the position, Officer Tom, uh, with, with the help of the rest of the police department, has trained the staff and students in a, in a different, um, different lockdown procedure and Alice training, which has been pretty comprehensive, um, starting about a year and a half ago. And again, the addition of the, of the fourth building. I don't see Tom quite as much as, as I did. The middle school also, um, has a, has a pretty significant need, um, to cover four grade levels of, of middle school kids. And so between the two buildings, we're splitting most of Tom's time. I know, I know that he loves to get into, he loves to get into all four of the buildings, uh, get into classrooms, do some, uh, instruction. He helps us, helps us run our, sometimes our advisory curriculum, gets into the health classrooms. With all of that, um, he's a, he's a pretty busy guy. To say nothing of, you know, and we're in a, we're in a building of, of seven hundred teenagers. Things, things do happen sometimes. And, um, and so then he's a, he's present to handle emergency situations when and if they happen.
And I think too, one, you know, what's, the effects of building relationships with, with young people just are not necessarily something that I can tally. I can't tick it off in a spreadsheet. I, I don't know how, um, you know, I can't put it in a personnel file. But that's really, um, those, those kind of relationships are just invaluable, especially in, in kind of today's environment with police. And, and that really is a goal that we want to keep pushing with the school resource officers. And it's very difficult for one guy with that number of students to build those relationships. But one of the other advantages we have with the school resource officer position is they provide my officers, or Tom does, with just lots of information about students he knows, families he's dealing with. And, and my officers call him all the time and say, hey, do you know this kid? You know, what's going on? And I bet ninety percent of the time he does, and he doesn't know what's going on. That's very important and just hard to quantify.
So where are we at? What, well, what's the next step?
Well, I said, the next step is to get our administrators to figure out how we pay for it.
Question, underlying question that I have is, you say you can't put a tab on what, what everything is, but is there, are there other examples of school districts and cities our size that, for how many officers there are in a, per capita, per population?
You know, I haven't looked at per capita, but, um, most of the, the districts, you know, that are basically our size, they do tend to have, um, they have, frankly, they have more police officers than we have. And they generally will have a, a school resource officer in a high school and a middle school. And not, I don't see too many that have full-time officers in, in the elementary schools. And, and bigger districts, they, they do have officers in all schools.
Is that your experience, Paul?
Right, right, right. And you know, this is, and I think that's a really good question, you know, from, and not to speak for our school board. Our board has had some discussion about police liaison services. Those initial discussions really prompted a lot of questions, which then led to trying to help facilitate a night like tonight, which is gather some more information, see what other questions pop up like those and from everybody. So then, as the chief mentioned, we can, we can continue to work on collecting, analyzing. We all have our subcommittees and then full boards and full councils that ultimately this, this sort of thing might be routed through. But as we've talked and as we all know, we're in the middle of winter, or maybe on the back end of winter. And there's no, there's no imminent decision. But we also didn't want to get so far down the road to the spring and then still have lingering questions before people feel like they can make an informed decision.
The current process is frankly, guys, that this is a partnership between the city and the school district. And if we're gonna have kind of any level of discussion, it seems appropriate that at least some of the discussion happens when you're all together. And so this is part, opportunity for that. So how is, how is it being paid for now? Right now, from a financial perspective, um, it's a split fifty-fifty between the school district and the city. One of the things that Paul and I have discussed is that should this move forward? And, and the chief didn't exactly say this, um, but I think it was implied in what he said. This has kind of always been a handshake deal. And that's not necessarily bad. But I think moving forward, as we continue to expand, there might need to be a little bit more framework around that as well. And so that's one of the things that might come forward.
A point of clarification? When you were saying it was a fifty-fifty deal, is that, are we talking about the current resource officer or the proposal for the second?
Current resource officer. And so that's, that's time and benefits. We don't split fifty-fifty a car or anything like that. That comes from the city. But, but time and benefits are, the, the cost of personnel is split fifty-fifty.
Thank you.
So based off of what you've said and what I'm gathering is, are you looking for another, basically another?
Correct. Yes.
Our hope would be, folks, is that if you have questions, now's a great time to throw that out. We can answer them, maybe not tonight, but going into the future, whether it's at other joint meetings or whether it's individually, if you have specific things that you want to hear about or know more about. This is a great time to have that discussion.
So I heard that it's very important for the resource officers to build a relationship with students and the community in the buildings. But there's also be, time being spent in the, uh, what was it, the group of, with the social workers?
Uh, student assistance team.
Right. So that team takes time away from the, uh, relationship building. But it sounded like the relationship building is the priority. So is this a, are we prioritizing the right things? Is, is, is that going on? Like if we prioritize one over the other, do things start to make more sense and align? Is there still as much of a need at that point? Have those things been asked or have we looked at that?
That's a good question. We did, Paul, maybe you can speak to this better than I can. We did look at, at the current position and, and how that would look. We, comparing it to an old job description with what's, what's really going on on a daily basis and the percentage of time that, that the current position likely spends on each of those. And, and reevaluating, we're looking at that all the time.
Yeah, really, a couple of different things at, at the same time. One is, as Annette was referring to, kind of just reviewing and refreshing the internal job description that, I mean, Annette serves as a, as a school-based supervisor. So your SRO has a, a point person, a go-to person if, um, but then ultimately a city employee. So that's going on and, and that kind of gets at what you're referring to is, what's, what's being asked of that person on a daily basis or a weekly or whatever it is? And are there modifications? And then whether you have one, five or a hundred SROs, um, that's the job description. And then the second question is then, so then you have enough people to do that across, across the, the district?
Go ahead. Well, I, I, I would like to discuss time. I mean, fifty-fifty, I get that. It, does that mean twenty hours a week he's spent in the schools and twenty hours a week he's somewhere else? Is he forty hours a week in the schools? Is he?
He's nine months in the schools.
Okay.
So you get seventy-five percent of his time?
Right. For eight hours a day or forty hours a week or maybe sixty hours a week? I know how that goes.
Right. I mean, he's attending athletic events, dances, so yeah, the, we.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. That's a good reference for us to know.
Is there any work going on anywhere to, to consider ways to, to bridge that gap over the summertime? So I'm not, I'm not on the school board, but as a parent, I know there's a lot of conversation about not wanting to lose progress in reading and math when kids are out of the school building for the summer. In the same way, is there a way that, um, we could, uh, work with these positions to, to try to continue to keep the school resource officer in contact with the communities of students over the summer? Is there, is there a model for that anywhere else? Or is there a way that we could assign that person to be especially involved in, I don't know, the community center or parks or, or something like that where they're still going to maintain that, that relationship with students?
Yeah, kids are around, especially the middle and high school all summer long. We have summer school programs, we've got camps, we've got, and so, so Officer Wenzel is, he's still our guy. He has an office at both the middle school and the high school. He's, he still spends quite a lot of time there in the summer, um, connecting with kids at school.
And so you just imagine that the second position would have a similar summertime connection to the, to the school system?
I would hope so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I would hope so.
I have a question for Chief Peters. You know, uh, as the twig is bent, so grows the tree. And you should be able to see the results of our officer in the schools as a result of what's happening in the community, especially, you know, during the off-school months. Have you, uh, you, you've been here long enough so you could look back and, and make a comparison of the summer problems that we used to have, how are they comparing now?
We continue to see, um, a rise in juvenile delinquency, cases brought to the county attorney. Now, some of that is simply because of growth. That's really, um, I don't think we're seeing necessarily more, more serious issues. But I think it's just, just because we just have more families. Really more, more growth and nothing else that I would put my finger on to say, or, you know, percentage wise that we're seeing big increases. But it, it, you know, I'm sure that, you know, teachers, you know, Annette will tell you that kids are becoming simply more sophisticated than they were. You know, we're, we're kind of operating a nineteen sixties model juvenile delinquency system with kids that are much more sophisticated than they were in the sixties. And, and more complex and have more complex issues to deal with if, if they are in trouble.
I, I don't think I'm gonna have any more children, but, uh, the, the question being, you know, the, the answer should be whatever we can do to get these young people on the right track to start with is gonna save a lot of expense and a lot of frustration and a lot of pain in the future. So, uh, to me, that's always been important.
I agree.
Annette, I think we're pretty early in this process, right? Cause I remember there's just like a rough draft of responsibilities. We, we don't, we don't even have that fleshed out yet, correct? Cause it hasn't come before personnel committee or?
Quite a bit of work has gone into it so far. I know that you haven't seen the, you haven't seen a draft yet at a
It's coming next.
Committee meeting.
Yep, that's probably the next step.
Okay.
From a board perspective is running things through personnel.
Cause I think that goes to Tru's point is we, we kind of want to see what he does and, uh, and figure out if the, that's, if adding another officer is the best way. Is adding another dean a better option? Maybe not. But I think until we have enough information, we can't really make any decisions as far as, and, and we're so early in it that I, it's hard to even make opinions and think of the questions that we should ask. You know, I think once we know the job description better, uh, I think, then I'd love to ask questions at a later time.
In the end, I think that this relationship has been a very positive one, right? It's morphed over time, right? I mean, it used to be the DARA program and, and it, it's changed and it's evolved and it's been positive. I think we're just at a point in time where we say, okay, well, sometimes your success of the past can be a real impediment to the future. If you're always looking back saying, well, that worked, let's just do more of it. That doesn't always get you the result you want to have. We just want to be able to make sure that as we come together and continue to talk that we are looking at, with your guidance, chief, the, the best ways to deliver and, and to support the systems that we have in, in our community.
Sure.
And that might be another liaison officer. Cause gosh knows, you can't have a guy in two places at the same time. And we have more than two places. So, um, that by itself creates a real issue for at least nine months of the year. So it's an important thing and we're glad that you're working on it. We look forward to your continued involvement, uh, as we evolve, as we get this thing going in two thousand and nineteen.
What surprises me is that, you know, I've always felt, at least in our current environment, that law enforcement officers are typically glorified social workers with a license to carry a firearm. But I still believe basically that law enforcement personnel are for the safety of our community. So we're, we're relying, we're, we're identifying this individual as a resource officer. What kind of conversations have you had with Niklet County that do have the services available and the expertise to help these young people marshal that a law enforcement officer?
Well, yeah, um, Officer Wenzel works with, uh, human services, corrections, Niklet County corrections, probation officers, if you will, on really what, what are the best approaches to take with kids that are in trouble? I mean, with juveniles, you do have, uh, more discretion on what's the best route to take.
So should this conversation include a three-way, um, split or a three-way discussion with Niklet County in addition to the city and the school board?
I can answer that.
Come on, you go ahead.
Steve, I, I think, you know, we have a question here of, of, uh, splitting up how much is here and there? And if we had a county, uh, division for this also, and, uh, I think it complicates it. And I have all the confidence in the world that, uh, the city liaison personnel can, uh, can absolutely handle this. You know, the nuances that might be different from the county, I think, are minimal. That's my opinion, but it's my little thought.
We also have an agreement with probation department. And the truancy officer is excellent, working with, uh, the police and, and the county. You know, the children in need of programs and services, the CHIPS program, goes as far as it can to help kids who really need it. And who are identified either through police officers or social workers or, God forbid, uh, some tragedy. So I think it is a three-legged stool, although I'm not sure the three legs are needed here.
My concern is, is, uh, from a long line of law enforcement personnel, we keep putting more and more responsibilities on our law enforcement personnel that weren't necessarily trained to do what they're doing now. And our society keeps putting more responsibilities on them and expects more. But then when stuff happens, the support isn't there. And I, I think it's a good idea. I'm not saying it's not, but it's an editorial.
Yeah. No, I appreciate your comments. It may be a discussion for, or a different discussion at a different time. I, I also just, I don't want to overthink what we're trying to do. Because it tends just to because it tends just to create problems that aren't there, too.
Yeah, this is probably one of those meetings, and we often say this with the city council, very preliminary discussion, without a doubt. It's probably one of those points where no one's ready to say yes, but we're certainly ready to say, let's keep thinking about it, let's keep talking about it, let's keep working on it. And if that's not the case, what I often say at the city council, somebody's gotta yell no now, otherwise we're gonna keep thinking and talking. That's not a yes. No is not a yes. But without continuing to have traction from a staff perspective, we're spending time and resources and energy trying to think about this stuff.
Well, I think the, the, or whatever, the burden comes more from, as Mr. Carlson pointed out, from the school drawing up what their needs are first, before we get into any discussion any further as to how much time, I don't know that kind of stuff. So that's, you know, that's where I think we're headed to, for a bit of anyway.
Right, I agree. It's a service we're providing them. I mean, if they don't want it. Yeah, no, I agree. You know, the, the other point that I failed to make, I think, is just that, that overall overarching issue of security, security in the buildings. That's, that's a, a thing all of the police officers do, but especially our school resource officers, to walk through a building and, and look and say, hey, what are we doing here? Why, why are we doing this? Or, how is this happening, and we need to change it? And, you know, we talk about these relationships with kids, but for me, one of the issues also is security. And having a marked police car at a school is a deterrent to someone that wants to do something they shouldn't be. They know there's a police officer here. Now, can we stop everything? No. But for a lot of people, guess what? They're going somewhere else. And I think we can't discount that part of the role.
From a, from a school district perspective, I, because I do agree, I, I think at the board and maybe at the council level, it's, we're just on the, we're just starting the conversation at the elected leader level. When our board set the continued look of safety and security as a priority last July, that work started. And it's, has started on a half a dozen initiatives, this being one of them. And so this is the right time for it gets introduced, and now, and now we move things forward. Our relationship with the, the St. Peter Police Department has never been stronger. The level of information that gets shared, the proactive nature of those meetings, where we're doing tabletops on things that have happened 1,500 miles from here. Chief Peters, or one of the detectives, brings up a scenario that a school district or a community's working through, and maybe sometimes it's right down the road where people are working through. And we have a chance to be thinking in a way to say, okay, well, if that was here, well, how might we respond? What would be our, what would be steps one through four? Those sorts of things are really important for us. And I think that this component of our security focus is trying to work in that area of being proactive.
Right.
Let's make sure that we're examining all of our options to, to stay ahead of, because it's been 20 years, and things have been, have been very good, and let's, let's keep that going.
Right, right. We don't fall behind.
I just want to be clear. I, I don't have enough information to even I'm not against the second officer. I just don't have anything really to go off of, of why we have the one we have, even. That being said, I think also from a security, you brought up the security standpoint, I think the school district has been very proactive beyond just the summer, in creating single point of entry, I think is a huge deterrent. And, so there are things that are in place already, and I guess, like I mentioned earlier, we just need more information, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we have anything else for the board or the council tonight.
Anybody else have anything they have before we adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Come on, move. Say it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
We're adjourned.